Okay, before we get into public participation, I see there are a lot of people in the public participation audience here tonight. How many people are going to be making statements or would want to talk? Jordan and I went and looked at it. Okay. Public participation.
I don't know if I'm going to win the honors. Somebody says something, I might want to say something back, I don't know.
Well, as long as we don't disparage people-
No, I can't say as I don't want to be taken-
As long as we don't disparage people, talk over people, and if I need to end the conversation, we'll end the conversation.
I'm not going to talk to him, I just don't like him. I want to hear what's going on first.
Okay.
Don't worry, I won't disrespect you.
Okay, who would like to say something in public participation?
I guess I would. I guess I'm concerned about, I just want to say I'm not here to try to get my coaching job back. I support Becca 110 percent, I'm behind her all the way. As a matter of fact, I recruited her last year. She had no idea she wanted to do something, and I got her through doing it. But the process that took place in getting our coaches this year, I have a serious problem with. I truly believe there was a committee, I understand that, that's no problem. But I truly believe that the deck was stacked before we even started the process. I believe there was lies told. I believe there was other coaches that told that we weren't, that Jordan and I weren't interested in the job and the position this year. And that wasn't true. I filled out an application, which means that the school knew that wasn't true. They knew that that was not the case. Right? I filled out an application, I feel like I shouldn't have bothered, that it was a waste of my time. Because I was here last fall, when we started changing the handbook in the middle of the season. And I put up a stink, because I don't like it. I think, you've got a handbook, you should go, you take all this time, you have the committee go through this. Time and time again, first read, second read, and the committee approves it. And then you say, they stick in it, that the principal can just change it whenever she wants. What's the point of having a handbook, if they can just change it whenever they want? Why don't you do all this? Why waste your time and our time, and everyone's time even having a handbook, if it can just be changed? If a kid breaks a rule, they're held liable. If a parent breaks a rule, they're held liable. If a coach does something wrong, they're held liable. But the principal can just change this handbook whenever she wants to. And there's an agenda going on up here. And last year, I was here and I tried to talk about it. And I was pretty well shut down and said that I didn't, you know, I, well, there was professionals, and I wasn't one of them, I guess. I coached here for 10 years, and I guess I'll never be a professional. I'm just a duck. But you know what, I care about this school, and I care about this town. This isn't about the school with me. This is about several individuals that are bullies, that push people around, and try to get their own way. And nothing we can do is ever good enough, and nothing is ever right. Look what happened with our banquet last year. What did we get, 20 minutes? A whole year's worth. The kids are working their butts off, giving everything they got, giving their after-schools, giving their weekends, giving their time, and then we're going to give them 20 minutes? That's what we're going to offer them to, you know, look, I say give them hours if that's what it takes to celebrate, it's a celebration. You know, let's do this right. Obviously, people are concerned. I look around, look at the people that are here, people are concerned at what's going on. And I'm concerned, and I don't feel that it was fair. Like I said, I'm not trying to get the job back, but I want the public to know what took place and what the process was about. And I've worked here, I've coached, and I've done a lot. I've done the All-Star League for seven years, and I never took a penny for it. When other people have been getting paid to do it. Other coaches doing it, and they're getting paid, and I'm not. And that's fine, I'm not here to complain about that, I just wanted to know how it works. Well, we'll just call it the junior high season for these guys, but you guys can do it for nothing. That's not fair, and it's not right, and it's going to be happening. You know, those kind of things. And I just want to say, the time I've given, 10 years, you know, and I've done homework help for years down there. Every time we had an away game, not for athletes, for anybody. Come in, we'll help you. You know, because I care. You know, I volunteered, I'm tired of softball games, Jordan and I, for years down there, never took a dime for it. Jordan does now, because he's on the board now, and it goes through Abner, and he does it. But we've done it for years and never took a dime. We've done all the soccer games for years for free, never took a dime from our school. We did it because we wanted to. And we thought that it was appreciated. And I think it was, by looking around at the people that are here, I think some people really did appreciate it. But then there's others that are just going to railroad you. And I feel that's what was happening with me, I was railroaded. Right? And I wouldn't work, I wouldn't come back again now. As long as she is here, Tina, I'm not coming back, and that's okay, it's fine. You guys do whatever you want, I'm not asking you to do anything, I'm just stating that you've lost me. You know, and you've lost Jordan, and you've lost Colby, and you've lost teachers, and you've lost students. And we're losing people all the time, because of bullying. Bullying, I don't know who read the posts, and it doesn't matter, I'm not here to talk about Facebook. But dozens and dozens and dozens of cases, people reporting bullying that happened down there. You know, I love the school, it's not the teachers, that's not the problem, it's the leaders. That's where the problem lies. You know, if you want to kill a serpent, you cut off the head, and you start over. We built that athletic program from the bottom up, and I'm damn proud of that. 82 straight wins, okay, they want to follow me for believing, for liking to win. That's one of the things they want to hold against me? Go ahead, but I don't care, any kid finds it more fun to win than they do to lose. It's not about winning, it's about playing, and it's about having fun. But it's a little more fun when you win, don't you think? I mean, I do. It doesn't take a genius to figure it out. I want to take a little bit of your time, I'm sorry, I gave plenty, 10 years of it I've given. And I'm asking for a little bit of time here, because I get two or three, four or five, and even about 20 points I want to make. And I'd appreciate it if you guys would let me make them. I'm wicked, I'm upset, I'm looking emotional. I just found out my younger sister's dying of stage four cancer tonight. So I'm upset, bear with me. You ain't going to have to call the cops or anything, I'm not going to. But I'm upset, I'm emotional, because I care. I love these kids, you see some of them in here, I love these kids. With all my heart, I love them, and I try to be there for them. And it's about a lot more than basketball, it's about life lessons, it's about learning to be, to win and to lose, and to be a part of something. And to be proud, to hold your head up. You know, to give your best, to give 100 percent, you can't lose if you give 100 percent. You can look someone straight in the eye, I don't care what the score is, I tell them all the time, you didn't lose your hand out of time, that's all. You gave 100 percent, how can you lose? Anyway, there's a few, I have a few questions, and I'd appreciate it if someone would try to answer them for me. The first one was, I'd like to ask, who was involved in the process of reading and going through the applications for the coaching positions?
Do you have an answer for that? If you come to the board?
Hello? I'm taking notes, I can hear.
So nobody knows who was in, nobody knows what happened, we just-
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
So, applications go to the superintendent's office, they're forwarded to my office, I read through them, set up interview.
So you're the only one that went through the applications?
Yes, and then I share them with the committee, after the committee was chosen.
So none of the other people in the committee saw the applications?
Yes, they saw all the applications.
Was experience, was that taken into consideration?
Could you repeat the question?
Was experience taken into consideration?
There were a lot of factors taken into consideration.
Okay, was experience one of them?
Yes.
Thank you. What are the other factors that are normally taken into consideration?
The realm of questions consists of teamwork, sportsmanship, handbook, bus, parent involvement, have you been fingerprinted? Handbook? Is there something I've forgotten? You've been through my interviews many times, I'm trying to remember.
Oh, I'm just asking you. Asking you. And I want the people to know what it consists of. Why were other applicants told that myself and Jordan had not applied for the position?
I don't have an answer for that, I didn't tell anybody that.
So if I told you, if I told you that I have two other coaches that told me, I have one right here on my phone, the message that was sent. They told me that you and Mr. Ashton told them-
I have documentation right here.
You would say that they're lying.
I have documentation right here that says the opposite of that.
I know of one too.
Me too. You know of one too?
Yes, I do.
And one of them that- I'm just going to tell you that one of the coaches sent each one of the kids a message. Every one of them. Every one of the kids got a message on the basketball team. So you can say and twist whatever you want, but this coach sent them each a message. And it said that she was blindsided by this, that she was told that there were no other applicants for this position. And in my opinion, that's lying. It's backstabbing, it's sneaking, it's trying to fulfill your agenda again. You have an agenda, we all know that.
It's because you spoke up?
It's because I spoke up, last year I spoke up here, and the last thing I told the board last-
Sean, I don't mean to interrupt, but could you please not attack?
I'm just-
I know, but-
Facts, facts.
Can you please just stick to the facts and not attack?
I am sticking to the facts, that's what they are.
If you could just ask your questions and stick to the facts.
Yeah, that's what they are.
Because I think it's getting a little hostile, and it's not all bad.
Yeah, well, that's, people are pissed.
That's fine, but please-
Yeah, I think the last time I noticed, I was running this meeting.
Thank you.
You're out of order, thank you. Sean?
Thank you.
Stick to the questions, okay?
Yes, sir. So, if I said that, that they had said that they would be lying, is that why we're at?
I'm telling you that I have documentation that contradicts what you said.
Okay, so they-
So this co, this other person lied, sorry.
Sean's got the floor, okay?
If I told you that Becker and Russell told me themselves personally?
I'd say you're lying.
You'd say I'm lying?
I would. I hear it all the time, Sean, I think you're on witch hunt, and had a good run.
Excuse me, excuse me.
And you can take that up with Becker and Russell, I guess. You can ask them if they told you.
My daughter has messages, everybody does.
So what is the sudden fall of grace? Is what I want to know, what? So, five people all agreed and decided that they didn't want me with the experience and the run that we've had, and the things we've done, and the volunteer, the, like I said, the soccer games, the volleyball. All of a sudden, all five people, just all of a sudden, out of the blue, just right after, I was trying, what I was trying to say, it was last fall, the last thing I told you when I left here was there would, I would pay for that. But standing up against her, that there would be consequences for me, that I wouldn't be back this year. Is that not what I told the board members last February? And it seems like the timing is just a little odd. That I stand up to you in the fall, and in the spring, boom, all of a sudden, the whole school has no use for me anymore. That seems like a little more than a coincidence to me. But whatever, I mean, I don't know, I'm just asking. I'm, like I said, I'm the one that encouraged these other guys to, I'm the one that recruited Becker and got her, and I support her 100 percent, like I said. You know, and she's afraid now, now she's afraid. I have children that want to comment, voice their opinion, they're afraid. Like I said, last February at the board meeting, I told the board that all the changes that were put in place, they wouldn't work. I said, I disagree, we had a meeting with the coaches, the coaches disagreed. You know, but you can't, you know, you put it in the handbook that the principal can just change the rules whenever she wants, and then we kind of have to roll with that. But I knew there would be retribution, I told you that. While sitting right here, I told you that I wouldn't be back. I went to the meeting, and when I saw the five people sitting there, I knew right then, I told, told two board members, I, that what was going on. There's no doubt in my mind, I don't know, I don't know if, some people think that they're so smart, or that we're so stupid, I'm not sure which it is really, but it's really not that way. Obvious is obvious, I mean. How about, I've been trying to find out, is Lubec playing in the small school league this year?
I think you received an answer from that, from Debbie.
Oh, I did?
I told you that, I answered you, and said I would let you know as soon as I knew. It all depends on-
Okay, excuse me, what's the small school league?
It's the school league that we play in with our school, Easton, Washington County, it's our regular junior high league.
It starts after February vacation.
Yeah, Pembroke period.
That's the one that they have the tournaments and stuff like that that's going?
Yeah.
It's the league that we've always played in. That, three years ago, she took us out of the school board, the parents had a fit, the kids had a fit, and the school board asked me, when I became the AD that year, if I could get us back in that league, and that's what I done. I'm wondering if we're going to be still in that league, or if we've been taken out of it again. Because I have my suspicions, the way they're talking, that this is our junior high season.
Okay, do we have any input on that, any information on that?
At this point, they are not, they have not been taken out of that league.
Thank you.
Do you know when you're going to know for sure?
When the board decides on handbook, we are following the old handbook at this time, and in the old handbook, we are part of that league.
Lena?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to say, in the old handbook, is it changing in the new handbook, if that's recommended?
We're on the old handbook right now.
We're on the, I can't speak for the new one, I mean, I haven't had time to even look at that. I just started up this week. I'm going by the old handbook.
We're on the old handbook right now, but the new handbook changes have not been approved.
And so, just one more question, then Debbie, or Sean may know this. I thought in September that we took care of the seasons in September. You know, you took care of the, all the different-
We haven't been able to get an answer to that question since school started.
Is there somebody else we can call?
Well, no, it's not going on school, if we're going to play in that league or not.
Yeah.
I keep hearing, this is our junior high season, this is our junior high season, I don't know, I'm just wondering. I mean, I'd just like to know. I can't watch this particular league, because Chloe's in high school, and so I'm going over and watching her. But I could watch Indiana if they're playing it, and I'm trying to find out. Because I have my suspicions, if that was part of what was going on, they were trying to get us out of that. And that's just a suspicion, I don't know that.
Mr. Johnson, can you check on that?
At this time, we will be in that league. At this time, yeah. I haven't heard anything different.
So will we be obeying the league rules this year, playing with Lubec kids, or are we back to no playoffs and no, you know, where are we with that?
If there are enough players for the boys team and the girls team of Lubec, no, we wouldn't take them on any other team.
So we're going to take down and make a team like we always used to? Because last year, we were only allowed seventh and eighth.
Sean, we cannot take down during that season, because we also have a P-Week season at the same time. That's one of the reasons that they're discussing possibly only having one junior high.
Okay, so they are discussing that?
We'll get the answers to that. What else?
So? So, I guess, the other schools take down and field a team, I guess they're saying, we can't do that, we did it for years. We've always had P-Week and junior high at the same time, always. It's never been at a different time, ever. And we've always managed to have both teams. They're not letting, last year, they wouldn't let them play, they wouldn't let the younger ones play. They would only let seventh and eighth, which means we have to take kids from out of town, is what they wanted to do, and then- We're breaking the league rules. You want to be in a league, but you don't want to play by the rules. You know, they won't play, they cancel the games, they don't come, it doesn't count.
Are the age appropriate and grade appropriate information in the handbook now?
It sure is, it's in there.
It was in there last year, but they chose to ignore it and change it in the middle of the season. They only allowed seventh and eighth, and the handbook said five through eight.
Yep.
And they chose to just change it in the middle, they just, they let kids fifth grade play the All-Stars, it's not, it's the same league we're in now, it's just what we called it the years, it used to be that 20 years ago. They let them play in that league, and then they didn't let them play in the junior high league. And the reason being is because we have an individual that won't do what she's supposed to do in that league. She don't go to the meetings, right? She won't play by the rules, she adds kids on, and every year, it's supposed to alternate, a different principal in that league is the head of the league, and everybody takes a turn. And we've never had a turn, because we don't have anyone that's willing to step out and do it. Not that that's a good thing, it's an added job, it's added work to her schedule, and I understand that, and I understand her not wanting more work, I understand that. But I have complained, and we've all complained, that that league don't like us, and that's true. But why would they? If we won't play by the rules, and we won't do our part, why would they like us? How about trying to obeying the rules and doing what you're asked, and doing what everybody else is, maybe eventually they'd say, oh, these guys are okay?
So playing by the rules means adhering to what we have in our athletic handbook?
It means the league rules I'm talking about. Sending the principal to the meeting, which the board is asking her to do over and over and over.
Are the league rules and what we have in athletic handbook opposite of each other?
No. No, the league rules say you can take down, the other teams have third grade, they take down to third grade, to make, just to make a team, so they could play. And I'm not saying that we have to go down that low, but I'm saying, just letting it to seventh and eighth, we don't have enough kids to make a team, two teams, a boys and a girls, out of those two classes. I don't know how many kids are in sixth grade, but not very many. Handful, five maybe? You're not going to make basketball teams like that, you got to take down. Nope? Anyway.
Can I just comment on the league?
Yeah.
I think there's a little dispute on the league. Is that all right?
Yeah, go ahead.
So the issue, the issue actually isn't with our school, we have an athletic director in Lubec. The other schools, well, we just-
The athletic director hasn't been named yet.
He will be tonight.
So the other schools don't have athletic directors. So their voice is their principal. So when the athletic director goes to these meetings, and Sean's actually gone with me to several of the meetings, they will not recognize the athletic director. When I was athletic director before, and I was showing Sean was, they will not let us vote.
Correct.
They will not recognize that. Now, that's not the fault of our school, we're fortunate enough to have an athletic director. That's a problem with the league, and the league will not bend.
Well, maybe we need to change that then. Like with these, with what's to this school?
I mean, the league, if you join a league, you got to play by their rules. I mean, is that simple? You can't expect them to all change for us, for seventh and eighth.
But I don't think it's asking them a lot to recognize their athletic director either.
It isn't, Debbie, and I agree with you, they should, but they won't. And so what are we going to do about that? We have to do something, because they're not.
Okay, hold on, Tracy.
A lot of people aware that the principal has to be there to make the vote.
The principal has to be there to make the vote?
To make the vote.
Is this a league rule?
Yes. And that's, like I mentioned it before, a couple of years ago. If you don't go to the meeting, you have no voice for the school, which are the students that's in the school. And I kept saying, there's no representation, no one's going to the meetings. And I was assured once by Mr. Johnson, that from now on, she'd be attending meetings. That's been two years ago. Now, I don't know why it's impossible to get to a meeting, there's only like four or five a year, but to make one in the last, what, five, six years?
When does this meeting happen?
They're all notified, she's notified, I'm sure Mr. Johnson's notified.
Has this meeting happened yet?
By spring, wouldn't I imagine, I mean, the fall one probably has.
Hasn't happened yet.
Soccer one has.
Soccer one has.
Yes. So they've already had one. I mean, it's, I think if some, this is just my opinion, I think if you will not go represent the children with a vote in a voice, then you should not be able to make any changes to the handbook under your discretion. Because you, obviously, you're not involved. I mean, that's just my opinion.
Now, when do we anticipate this meeting happening, do we know?
It should be in December. That's when the last two that I've been to-
When?
Should be in December.
Should be in December?
The last two that I've been to, I've been.
When was that?
In December, last year and the year before, when I get voted down every time I go.
Ah, yeah, I get a different attendance.
You weren't there.
Neither were you.
I was there two years ago, and you sat here and told the board that we went to two, and that was a lie, we went to one.
I've been to two of those meetings.
Well, I don't know how many you've been to in years, but that year, you sat here and told the board that we, me, you, went to two, and we went to one.
I've been to one with you, and one with Billy.
Billy wasn't here then, he hadn't even moved here then.
I went with one to Billy last year.
Okay. But you sat here and told the board, we, me and you, went to two, which was a lie, we didn't go to two, we went to one.
Okay, okay, got that.
And that was a phone line. We were on the phone, me and you are.
Anything else we need to address, Sean?
Yeah, I believe there's been a huge communication problem here in the school. Now, this isn't the principal's or the superintendent's school. This is our school, and the school board should be the one asking the questions, not answering them. We pay the taxes, we pay the salaries of the principal and the superintendent. Now, and this is our school, and we need to take it back, this isn't right, this stuff, just say whatever you want, just bulldoze people over. I am seeing kids with a finger in their face, backed up against the wall, with tears running down their face, just bullied, because they wanted to play basketball. And in the end, they backed out and said, no, I don't want to play. This is the stuff I've seen. I've had conflict before, and the next day, two of my kids can't play. I've had conflict before, and the next day, five of my kids might be failing, might be. One of them being Chloe, our daughter, who has been our old student her entire school career. She might be failing all of a sudden, because I had words with somebody. Taking it out on the kids. And there's ample people here that can tell you story after story after story. This has got to stop, we can't, I'm not going to tolerate, I haven't said anything, I haven't spoke up, and I'm guilty, and I apologize to everyone in here. But I was afraid of retaliation, which is what got me in the end, is retaliation. I didn't want to lose my position, why? Because I care. Because I care. You know, you're pushing everybody away that cares, to have an agenda. Now, let's get out of this league, they don't like us, because I won't do what they ask us to, so let's get out of there. At any cost, let's get clear of the people that would stick up for us.
If the board wishes to discuss this anymore, I would be more than happy to go into executive session and discuss the process of what happened.
Go ahead, Mama.
No, I'd just like to say, I'm kind of confused here, because I started coaching, and years ago, down here, and we had a, with the superintendent, principal, and all of them. One time, I said, I'd like to have Sean Tinker as my assistant coach, and they said, well, you can't, Baba, why's that? He's an ex-druggie. I said, ex-druggie, he's an ex-druggie, ex, hear that? These things happen, okay, and they got to be straightened out. Number one is, the man put an application, and a man of this caliber, that's helped the school out and everything, why wasn't he hired? Can't people just come out and tell the truth? Why wasn't the man hired? You had five, who's on the committee? You got five people on the committee? Who are they? Let's just come out and tell the truth. I mean, why wasn't he hired? I don't understand. I don't understand. Okay? Please, you know, come on, we're all from Lubec here, we all make mistakes. But this guy, and this other guy over here, Tinker, both of them, got a tremendous job for the school, and we're going to throw them out.
And I just want-
My interview consisted of the acting AD and the principal. That's what my interview for coaching consisted of. It didn't take five-
I believe that's what it was before.
That's how it's, it's never been.
It's an agenda, it's an agenda. I was railroaded, everybody in this room knows that. And it would be easier if they just come out and said, you were right, you were right, you were railroaded, and you know what? And say, I'm sorry, and I consent apology, and I'd walk away. And I'd walk away.
Can they be a compromise?
I'm better than that.
Can they be a compromise?
I'm not looking for the job, that's not what I'm looking, I'm looking for things to change, to get this stuff- That's not what I'm looking, I'm looking for things to change, to get this stuff straightened out.
Okay, anything else on public participation?
I must say, can they be a compromise? You let them both coach?
Hold on, hold on a minute. Go ahead.
Tell them something.
Thank you. So first off, I wanna say that Sean and I coached side by side for many, many years. We actually started the All-Star League years ago because we felt that a way to get better, because we do have an easier run in the Eastern Main League. We fare very well there. We felt that by starting the All-Star League, that our students or our athletes would be playing against kids that were better athletes and our kids would get better by playing against kids who were the best of the best. So that is how the All-Star League started. Probably eleven, I don't even know, Sean, eleven years ago, probably.
Yeah, a long time ago.
And I don't, I, I want everyone to know that Sean has done a fantastic job as a coach. He loves kids. That is true. And I've watched him coach over the years. I've watched him be a good role model as well. As I said, we coached side by side. That being said, we have made some amazing memories over the years for ourselves. It's probably the most rewarding thing I've done in my life. We've made memories for our own children because we were fortunate. I coached all three of my daughters. He's coached one of his sons and his daughter. We've coached all of their friends. That is something most people don't get an opportunity to do. Most of you in this room probably have never coached your children or will never have that opportunity. And it's an experience like no other. When my youngest graduated in eighth grade, Sean came to me and said, Debbie, do you mind, will you be upset if I take over junior high ball? I said, absolutely not. My time was done, my girls had moved on. Therefore, he stepped in for three years and gets a coach club and I'm sure made some amazing memories. What I don't like that's happening in our community that's being torn apart over sports is that our time, Sean, we have been offered this amazing experience. It is time, nothing against you because your coaching is amazing. It is time to let some other parents, younger parents, have that same experience. We have young coaches coming up through. We should be hallelujah that we have people, young families, that are invested in our school. This is a positive thing. Yes, it's time to say goodbye to Coach Tinker. He is amazing. No one here is gonna deny that fact. He is an amazing coach, he has done wonders. But I am sure that Becca and Jesse and Russell Wright and Larry are gonna come in and be amazing role models and coaches too. But they, Becca and Jesse are young parents. Why are we not rejoicing that we have these amazing parents coming forward? It's the circle of life. Our kids have moved on and someday, Sean, you might get an opportunity to coach K. I might get an opportunity to coach my granddaughter someday. What an experience that would be. And I'm gonna speak to the Russell Wright because I think that you have been fed the wrong information. I will take ownership for that. I asked Russell Wright to apply. I did that, that's on me. We were talking about our grandchildren and I said, someday I hope that I get to coach Harper because it would be amazing to coach my own daughters and then coach my granddaughter. And I said, don't you wanna coach your granddaughter? And he said, I never thought of that. And we talked about, he said, I'm gonna throw my hat in and see what happens. So if you wanna blame someone for Russell Wright applying, that's on me. And I'll own that every day of the week because I did talk to him about it. And he's a good coach. He will do right by those girls. And Sean, he's making memories with his granddaughter. He coached his daughter, now he's coached granddaughter. I hope that's me someday. So instead of us fighting and arguing, you're tearing the community and the school apart. How can we come together? How can we make our school strong? This is leaking into our hallways. This is coming into our classrooms. Our kids are hurting. When they're on the court, they don't know what to look at Jordan and see what he's telling them to do and they don't know what to look at Becca. I'm sure Becca's feeling the pressure as well. I feel like, you know, we talk about bullying. I know most of my coaches this year want to quit already because they are being bullied. They are being bullied because they want the same opportunity that you and I have. And I'm, I'm not thinking negative, Sean, but I never would because we coached by each other for years. But it is time to let some of these younger parents step forward. What's behind that?
I'm just gonna say one thing. I say one thing, so.
But do we know that's really how it is done there? We don't know that.
Hold on a minute until you're recognized, please. Go ahead.
Me?
Yes.
I just wanna say one thing. So this is gonna be a new rule that we're gonna give to you to do the coaching. Russell Wright coached before. He shouldn't be on theory and if he's not gonna be, then he shouldn't be on theory. I mean, come on, we can't show favoritism either. Okay, that's what I hear here. No, I'm just saying.
Okay, let's not argue, please.
No, hold on, I'm saying we're gonna make a new rule and have you do the coaching, put it in writing.
No one's making any new rules here right now, okay?
Okay, I'm just saying, that's what it's gonna be.
I would like to go back and address the athletic director, whoever that person may be. That when it, if this happens, I would like it to be publicly notified. I would like it on Quade TV or so that everybody in this town knows who that athletic director will be. I would also like to see a specific job description and what that person will be in charge of and that there be some structure here, which right, I, I think it's lacking right now.
Okay, number one, when we announce who is coaching and who is athletic director and so on, so forth, even right to who's hired as teachers or paralegals and so like that, it is right here on this. So it is on Quade TV. We do have a job description for each position at the school. That is in place already. Tracy.
To make one thing clear, I haven't heard anybody argue about any of these new coaches. Not at all. And anybody that had been replaced, I always was told that they was glad we got the job. They liked those people. It's what people's upset about is the process, the way it goes, not being, you know.
We're gonna look into that.
Because I have coached all four of my kids, who still coaching.
Hold on, Amber.
Typically out of respect though, until the coach feels they're done coaching, they are given consideration. They're still putting in that application and they've won ten, eleven seasons. I mean, typically out of respect, I mean, I would think they would get the job until they're done.
Okay, I have one question for Debbie. Who's bullying these coaches? You just said the coaches are being bullied.
I have been talking directly to both of my coaches and former coaches are texting them, texting their family members. It's happened. I had a school board member, Londa. You approached Becca and asked her to come this evening?
I certainly did. I encouraged her to come because I read her statement on Facebook is why I asked her, Debbie.
And I encouraged her not to. Hold on.
I, I feel as, I just feel as really sad that Becca should be, or any of the coaches should feel the way they do right now. They're upset, they, they're torn, they're like, do I get done? I mean, look at, look at how the diary. She got hired, she got done.
Look at the situation that Darryl got hired and done with.
Darryl was the only one all I wanted.
But the way that they set that up for the volleyball, did they set it up the same way they always do, Jordan?
No, I'm not sure how they set it up, to be honest.
They, they didn't set it up the way they usually set it up, Debbie.
It was more than that. People applied and I believe in strength for volleyball because that is a false sport. We had one applicant, I wasn't on the interview committee or anything, but I, I know for a fact we had one, one applicant.
Well, the thing that concerned me, you said that these coaches that were on right now were being bullied.
They are. They are.
So, okay. Mr. Tinker.
Yeah, I just wanna respond to what Debbie said. I, I agree with most of what Debbie said. I love Debbie, we did work together, we had, we had some fun. But it's like Tracy said, it's not, I, Becca knows and Dylan can tell you he's here, that's Becca's husband. I support her a hundred percent, nobody is making that. I am lifting her up and telling her that they need her now more than ever. I don't know who is saying it's, it's bullying. I think, you know, like I said, if Dylan wants to, he could probably speak on that more. I am nothing but supportive of her and Russell. That has nothing to do with this.
Even if he's on the team, wait, Becca.
Wanda, you got a comment?
Well, I just wanted to say that, you know, we're gonna be talking about the athletic program.
They won't.
On the agenda, but to me, our coaches, like they've been here for thirteen years. I'm a little insulted by what Debbie said. I'm a nurse at sixty-seven and I hope they don't wanna get rid of me because I'm older and I'm not gonna give younger nurses. I'm very insulted, I'm insulted by that, Debbie.
But do you not, would you not like younger nurses to have the opportunity to be in the profession as well?
I hope so. I trained them. I trained them for six years at WA as a CNA instructor. But for our kids, what they deserve, or do we get rid of teachers after six years since I?
You're missing what I'm saying.
I don't miss your point at all.
Yes, you are.
Okay, let's not argue about this. At this time, I'm gonna suspend public comment.
Come on, give me one chance. You got something you want to say?
The board is gonna go into an executive session. And when we go into the executive session, we'll invite, we'll invite you all back in, okay?
Bullshit. Come on, sir. I pay taxes in this town.
You're out of order right now.
I'm on the order, throw me out there.
I'm not gonna.
Throw me out.
We're in an executive session, okay?
Let me tell you something.
The motion to go into an executive session.
... Okay, we're getting into a meeting.
I can hear you.
On what the interview process might be in the future at a, at another meeting. Okay, so. So to continue on with our agenda here, we have to consider the approval of, in November seventh, two thousand nineteen, school committee minutes as written or with corrections are as recommended by the superintendent of schools. I have one change that I'd like to add that along with other presence, Amber was at that meeting.
On the tendance, okay.
I mostly accept the minutes as written, as amended. Second it.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Wanda.
One thing that I had a question about, we were talking last week about the McGraw Hill and that comes out of Title I. I'm wondering, Mr. Johnson, is there any way, because last year we spent twenty thousand with this.
Okay, I, I have to stop you, okay? Can you bring that up onto the school committee?
Okay.
Minutes here, okay. So any further discussion or approval of the minutes? All in favor? All opposed?
I have been approached by a former student to see if we have any music equipment that is, that won't be no good to us and if so, could he have? I have talked to a music teacher and asked him to look over to see if there's anything that absolutely cannot be repaired. And I don't know where the board stands on it, if it's junk, if I can give it to this former student.
Well, like anything that the school owns, it has to go out to a vote with the board.
So bring this up next meeting for a vote, okay?
And along with that, as far as, you know, what the item is and, I mean, if there's any kind of value that could be put on that item.
And there may not be anything, I'm having the music teacher go through stuff. In light of the fact that we'll have a new athletic director, I don't know whether it's fair to do anything with the handbook if the athletic director has gone had a chance.
It's on the agenda, we'll bring it up.
On December third, fourth, break, we'll be going to DEI. This is a very educational opportunity.
DEI?
Down East Institute over in Viam. It's a trip that they make usually monthly or every once a month. Very educational opportunity for our kids. The different content areas are all brought into that, so it's not just a field trip of go play on the beach for the day. We have an early release, our web to school program, that's on December fourth. Our web to school program has a feature on it in which we can do electronic report cards. And that's what we're gonna be working on that day. Our goal is to get electronic report cards, parents will still get a paper one, but it's a way for teachers to enter their grades and that type of thing. The first one out in March on the second trimester. We almost made it to this one, but we're, we're not quite there, so we decided to put it on hold. On December tenth, we'll have start testing. This will be, again, that's testing that we do three times a year for all students and then based on where students test, determine if they get tested again in six weeks, six to eight weeks. This works for kids who either need extra help or are gifted and talented and they can be put in proper enrichment pieces for them. December eleventh, unfortunately Brittany Ray will not be here tonight. She's had a medical emergency with her family. But on December eleventh, she will be back at the school working with teachers. That is for transforming the rural education experiences and it helps children with the top, they call pieces of adverse childhood experiences. I have my letter of good, so she'll be here on the eleventh. Do we have Dave or Wendy might come back? She emailed me today and I just said at her convenience, when things settle down, you know, get back to us. On the twelfth, we have our Christmas play at six P M. in the cafeteria. I don't know what board meetings look like for the month of December, but that was put on the calendar. We try to stay, like if the play is on the third Thursday of the month, we try to stay on the third Thursday of the month. That will start at six. On the thirteenth, we'll have our annual craft day. This is where children are grouped various ages and do various activities of building Christmas ornaments or whatever that they hang on their tree at home or give to their parents. On the seventeenth, we will have the Washington County Leadership Team. It's a check and adjust day. This is a team that I'm on, some of the things that we do, the harvest of ideas, where we brought together over six hundred teachers to a workshop. We do a check and adjust day, meaning we check in, if we're doing okay, we stay on task. If we don't, we make adjustments as needed. And it is that time of year, that's why you're getting the report through December. The eighteenth will be the craft day, snow date. And then the nineteenth will be the Christmas play, snow date. And vacation starts December twentieth. And Thanksgiving.
The Christmas play falls on the twelfth and there was no school board meeting that night. We were meeting on the fifth and the nineteenth, so I don't know what to do with this.
We are, that's on the nineteenth.
Okay, Wanda?
Okay.
You had something for school?
Yeah. One thing I wanted to ask Mr. Johnson, I see that, you know, the audit is complete and when will we be getting information about the audit? Yay, yay, okay. And I was gonna talk about the McGraw. We spent twenty thousand last year and so far eight thousand this year, Hannah, with Title I. Is that corrupt, Hannah?
No, the big chunk of change last year, I believe, came out of the budget and that was the new reading program for pre-teen through eight.
That was twenty thousand.
That was put into the budget for that.
And so they, we get, we got both of these, it was eight thousand because I just saw the warrant. I'm wondering if we can get them to come down and talk to us about these programs, Mr. Johnson? It seems like spending that kind of money, they would be, well, you know, they'd come down and just go over these with us.
So the math program is one that we've been using since they at first came out, Everyday Math. So that's just an upgraded edition. That's not a new program. The reading program is a new program, wonders. And with that, teachers went over to schools to visit classes that had already been using that program.
But this new money, how soon, all of them, you think they've come, Mr. Johnson, and do a little presentation about? do a little presentation about how these?
Either, either of those companies, either of those programs, math and, math and language arts, they do have, they do have a sales representative that, that we talk to for pricing and any new updates, and they may be essentially trying to sell to us. And they would have somebody, I would think, who would be willing to come down, I'm very confident in that. It won't be for free.
Yeah, well, give us an overview.
Won't be for free.
Well, for twenty-eight thousand, they should give us a break.
They should be here for free for twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, for twenty-eight.
I can, I can explore the possibility.
Do you wanna hear from your teachers on how it's working?
Huh?
Do you wanna hear from your teachers on how it's working in the classroom?
Um, sure.
Yeah, okay.
Um, I will see if December works, if the crazy time of year...
Well, let's see when McGraw's coming first, Tina. Let's see when they can come and we can have it all together. Uh, and I'm also, uh, let's see, uh, about the heat, I had called over yesterday, Mr. Johnson, to see where we're at with heat and heat for the building, the LCOC, uh, and where, where are we standing with all of this?
Oh, yeah, as we reported at the last board meeting, uh, Tina corrected me, um, I obviously knew that the heat was on at the school, but at the last board meeting, Tina corrected me and the heat had not been turned on, the LCOC, and has there been any change in that?
Nope, heat's on, things are good, I think, Nancy. We talked the other day.
Yep, heat's on, doors are open to the side, it's cold. We have some explanation going on in the system itself, if we can work on some stuff, but, yeah.
Um, and I did, I talked to Mike real quick and Nancy's husband, yesterday, I was down there for, yesterday for the day down there at the LCOC, and I shared it with Mike earlier that her husband might be a good person for us to talk to about the heat being, the condition of it, he seemed to know a lot about it, and, uh, 'cause I think everything else is kinda falling through with whoever else. But you said you'd be willing to, didn't ya, to talk with Mike for that? You might have some ideas.
Yeah, maybe get Cecil down, he's here at the time.
Yeah. Um, and I'm wondering where we were at with the key, if Miss, uh, if Miss Maker got her key yet for the high school end?
I'm actually taking my day off Sunday and meeting with the lock flip down there at ten a.m. in the morning.
Now, are there any other keys that's gonna hold us to, that will open the door, and can she still get through on the other end, or is that locked later? You know that side door, does that stay open that goes into the LCOC?
No, no, that's not, no, it's locked.
Yeah.
That's locked all the time.
Okay.
But we have a key that will open for us to go to the center. But if somebody closes the door when I go on through, which has happened, then I can't come back through it.
Okay.
We don't have a key to that side that goes in.
So what kind of pre-key door is this that it has two different keys? I don't understand that.
Can I offer some info?
Yes, we do.
So the door separates the LCOC side from the school side, uh, and it goes into the library. And the challenge piece is, is that door is the deciding factor for the two security systems. So access to the door, door of the day, when the security systems are off, not a big deal, you know, but it, either people from either side opening that door without the right code could activate either the school's alarm side or our alarm side. So that's why there's two different keys on that door, because it's access to two different structures, you know, businesses, whatever we wanna call it, the school side and the LCOC side.
Okay.
So we have a side, we have a key to our side, you know?
Okay, so the school was our, our property.
Yep.
Uh, so when this occurs, Nancy, I don't think you guys will have a key anymore.
Well, if you don't rekey our side, it'll be fine. If you rekey your side, if that's your goal...
Yeah.
Then...
Uh, well, my goal has been for two years, Nancy, that our students can walk through that library down to the LCOC. That's been my goal, I guess. So I hope, when we do get the key lock on that, there's not gonna be another excuse, I guess.
So there'll be access into the library on the LCOC door, correct?
There's always been access into the library from the LCOC.
Right. And then the key that will be given to Miss Maker?
That key is available...
Will access from the library, from the school side into the library. That's the lock that's gonna be changed, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
The only thing that they have to remember, if they come from the old, LCO side to the school side, they wanna be Superman to get to that keypad, 'cause it's way up by the cafeteria, or they're gonna set the alarm off.
Okay, let's do something a little bit easier for them than, you know, so they don't have to, uh, go through all these little hoops and everything. Let's make it convenient, like a regular, why can't we have a regular lock on this door? I don't understand.
I just told him on meeting with Frankie on Sunday to have that done.
They've been changing the lock, but how far does that keep that from the door?
It's way up by the entrance door to the cafeteria. So from the, from the library...
What's the, what's the trip time?
Thirty seconds.
But that's not a...
The code is never on, though. Not by time of day. No, it shouldn't be. It should not be set until five thirty or whatever time Tammy, five thirty Tammy leaves or five o'clock. Five thirty, yeah. Yeah. And where are the...
And they're out of there at five o'clock, so I think there'll be some issues.
So are you guys going through the library right now?
Yeah.
Yeah, good. And I just wanted to say that we're having, um, which I'm very thankful for, we have an open gym for the students on Sunday, and, uh, if there's any way that the door could be kept open so we could use the balls.
The balls are supposed to be put out on a cart feed.
There wasn't Sunday, there wasn't any balls, and luckily, uh, we, we got to use, there were two or three balls down there, luckily. The kids had those, but I don't know why that would bother, you know, when I'm gonna stand the ball.
Well, and our regular custodian hasn't been there either, so that could've been the problem with that, but I'll write a note for to-do.
Um, and I, I'd like to, if I can, Mike, I'd like to thank Sean for coming tonight, and I hope it's cleared the air, and for all you people that came tonight, I feel that a lot of you are here to support Mr. Tinker, and I myself appreciate that, and I appreciate, Sean, what you and Jordan have done for our kids for many years. And I, um, you, to my, myself, you're a major loss.
Okay, anyone else from the school board have anything? Go ahead.
Um, I spoke with all the other members of the school board, and, um, one of the things that I've been thinking about is, um, that as a group, there's some difficult dynamics sometimes, and, um, so I've been given permission, um, by fellow board members to look into finding a facilitator to just help us work through in executive sessions some, some group processing. And, um, I'm still gathering information on who, and how much it would cost, and where that money can come from, but, um, that's something that I think would be great.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Johnson, did you have a letter from someone regarding the resignation?
I, it's part of my report, and it's not embedded on your agenda, I would simply announce the resignation of a board member.
Okay, so superintendent's report.
Yes, a couple of quick items before I go into your audit. Um, I have received the resignation of Shenadeen O'Neil, uh, from this school committee. I'd like to thank Shenadeen for her service to the Lubec School Department, and we certainly wish her well in her future endeavors. I will also be attending a Small Schools Coalition meeting tomorrow at the University of Maine. I've referenced that group in board meetings before. Uh, the commissioner herself will be joining the discussion tomorrow, so we're looking forward to that. Any chance for the rural schools to get Commissioner Z here is one we certainly wanna take advantage of. I also would like to appoint Debbie Bosquette to be the athletic director for the remainder of this year. And with that, I will move into our audit report.
Yeah, I have one comment.
Okay?
Okay, just let it reflect that the, uh, appointing of coaches and athletic directors are not done by the board, and, um, we don't have any role in the process as far as that goes.
And I will say myself, I'm not, not always comfortable, uh, but we don't have any part in this. I want everybody to know that.
Okay, audit report.
So I do have copies of the actual full-blown audit from the board members, and I've copied a couple of pages for ease of reference that I will be, uh, speaking to during the course of the meeting tonight.
You know, I, I looked real quick, Mr. Johnson, I was, uh, looking like from the last budget, and it looks like, again, this year, what wasn't spent, and I got the last one...
Right.
Was over three hundred thousand dollars.
It wasn't that much, but I'll be, I'll be talking about that tonight, right now as a matter of fact. If you wanna look on page...
What'd I say? Is it happy or...
If we, if we wanna look on page twenty-nine, you can see the status of your general fund, and this is a, this is a page I always reference because it, it holds a lot of information, uh, in, in one location. So the top paragraph under revenues, you can see that, uh, your revenues were very close estimation there, and we did have a five thousand dollar revenue shortfall, that's related to some of the fees that are ta, are attached on to your subsidy after, uh, after the subsidy figures are released. But what I really wanna call our attention to is the middle section on expenditures. Uh, you can see the individual warrant article areas that we vote on, regular instruction, special education, other instructions, student-staff support, and so on. Left-hand column, that's your approved budget. The second column from the left is identical because we did not need to amend your budget last year for any reason. Uh, the actual, uh, what we spent in those car centers and the file right is the difference between your budget and what was spent. So I wanna just refresh our memory, I was asked, uh, I believe it was one of the September meetings, uh, about unexpended funds, particularly in special education and transportation, and you can see the actual figures from your auditor. And just to refresh our memory, in the case of transportation, you can see that we pulled through forty thousand two hundred and eleven dollars. And the single biggest reason for that amount of money by far relates to the VW diesel grant that we did not get. Just to refresh the board's memory, and then those other folks who are present, we had to budget a twenty percent match in order to cover ourselves if we did receive the grant. We did not, so we had that money budgeted for, but did not need to spend it. We did buy a bus, and you are making a payment, but that was far less money than the twenty percent match on two buses. So that's the reason for, under transportation, we're pulling through forty thousand two hundred and eleven dollars. Under special education, I also noted back in September, and the audit bears this out, that we are carrying through a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, one twenty-three three oh three is the figure, and the explanation for that, as I stated to the board, we were able to use federal money in the case of tuition for those students who attend callous day treatment, as opposed to using local money.
I have a question on that.
Certainly.
Um, why wasn't this found in previous years? Was this a grant that someone applied for?
Okay, lo, local entitlement is indeed a grant, and there is an annual application that is filed. Our special education director completes that application for us. And the amount of your award is related to the amount of money you spent. The application itself is processed, and this timeframe is dictated by the states, nothing that we have any control over, but the application is processed after your budget is passed. So would it be nice if we knew how much we were gonna get before the budget process, and we could run a tighter budget? That would be very nice. Uh, but we just don't have that figure in hand when we, when we, uh, when we are working, uh, through the budget process, 'cause the application goes in, goes in after. Uh, but the other thing I would call your attention to, in that particular case, I mentioned that, uh, it's related to how much you spend, and I've seen this play out in some other places, a drastic cut in special education for whatever reason, and the most common reason is that the needs of the child change. Conceivably, if you have a high-need student that finally graduates, you don't have to carry that cost. If you have a dramatic reduction, you don't get as much federal money. And the rationale behind that is, if you don't need it, they won't give it to you. So we have to be careful, I mean, could we, could we cut special education to some degree? Yes, uh, but deep drastic cuts will only mean you will get less federal money. Uh, but that's something that we'll take into consideration when the budget process begins, certainly.
So, so in June, if we can forecast out...
Yep.
And we have the same amount of kids in special education, then needs haven't changed.
Right.
Can we anticipate something like this on the next plugin cycle?
I, I think, I think you could estimate and plan on something in the ballpark, assuming what you just said, that our numbers and our needs stay fairly constant.
But then again, if, if that remains where it is, okay.
Right, right. And that, that's, that's an area we can revisit, uh, but the good news is, if you don't have to spend it, it pulls through in your audit, and you can see it represented here. The last area I wanna call our specific attention to, facilities maintenance, I've received several questions over the course of the year about fuel oil for the last fiscal year. Uh, you can see where we ended in facilities maintenance for, uh, two thousand nineteen. And in facilities maintenance, we finished six thousand four hundred and eighty-eight dollars in the black, so that car center, the total car center was not over-expended. The individual fuel lines, as we've talked about before, the individual fuel lines were, but the car center was not, and the reason for that is because there were other items that were budgeted in that car center. We budgeted an amount of money in that car center for architectural drawings, potentially for a boiler system that we did not need to expand. We also budgeted money for a roof repair in that car center, and that repair did not take place until after the fiscal year expired. We just had roofing systems, it may have been late summer, early fall, early...
Long, early fall.
Early fall?
Yeah, September.
So the reason that we were able to stay within that car center is because we had money budgeted for those other things that essentially offset the overage in fuel oil consumption. So yes, we over drew the fuel individual line, but we were still within the facilities maintenance cost center. So yes, we over drew the fuel individual line, but we were still within the facilities maintenance cost center. Finally, your contingency, I do believe, I'm going from memory, but I'm pretty sure I asked the board, and you did vote to activate your contingency for the fuel line. But because we finished $6488 in the black, the auditor did not need to apply that. So that's why your contingency shows that we pulled the $10,000 through. We didn't spend your contingency because you didn't need to.
What did you, I thought you people, last year, you increased that to $20,000, you needed it for something.
I don't think we increased contingency to 20. I think contingency stayed at 10, and that's, that's what was voted on. This is what is captured in the figure on the far-left column, which says original budget. Those are the cost centers that were voted on, and your contingency shows that at 10. And that's, that's what's captured in the audit.
And the fuel, Mr. Johnson, I talked to Mike about this. Where, you know, they didn't vote the money in to spend the money on fuel. And it always sounds like I'm against LCOC, and I'm definitely not. But I feel we should have, I, I don't feel comfortable spending the money the way that we're doing. That isn't what it was set up for, is to go to a town meeting, special town meeting, and ask the town, do you want us to spend money at the LCOC? It's the taxpayer that's spending, I'm spending their money, and I'm not spending it the way they asked us to.
Okay, so a couple of things that I would say, and that's, and that's a fair question, and this is, and this is the answer. Within the lines, the lines don't handcuff the school department. And here are a couple of legitimate examples that I've had to use in the past. This board can vote, simple, simple vote, to move up to 10% between the cost centers. So if we think we're going to have an overage in one of these cost centers, you can move up to 10% between, between the cost centers. And that doesn't require a specific action from the town. You can activate contingency and apply it to an individual cost center. So conceivably, you know, if you're looking at regular instruction, and it's $1,155,658 in the budget, well, 10% of that becomes $115,000. So that gives you a lot of wiggle room if you have to apply that particular rule, and you have to move money from one cost center to another.
So should we wait until the town meeting next summer and ask them at that time if they want us to spend money on the fuel for the LCOCs? I mean, I don't know what kind of money you've received from them yet this year.
I can tell you that I've not received any money from them this year. But in, in the case of the LCOC, there's another item that comes into play, and that's your lease. We leased that space to them, and we have a lease, and I'm sorry to say that the lease doesn't mention anything about fuel, and I've said this before, that that would bear, you know, looking at the lease, looking, looking at the contents of the lease. But I think there's an expectation that the space would be usable. And if there's no heat on it, and there's no, there's no heat in there, then I, I can see a scenario where you might be in violation of the terms of your lease. Now, the lease doesn't spell out heat specifically, but I think there's an expectation that the space is usable if you're leasing it to them. But again, that's not my area of specialty. So conceivably, the LCOC, the issue of how the facility is used, that can come back as a standalone referendum, if the town would like to address that. But as far as how we spend this money, I want to just reassure the group that when the budget meeting is held in the summertime, and the citizens are there voting, they are authorizing us to spend up to the total size of the budget. And that's listed where it says total expenditure, $2,237,643. The, the town is authorizing us to spend that money.
But not $30,000, it's, it's an estimate, a good estimate of $30,000 is what we spent there last year, Mr. Johnson, and we can look at the numbers. And, you know, they didn't give me the authority to say, mhm, you go ahead and you spend that 30 if that's what they need. I, I mean, we just, I feel we have to address that whatever way. Myself, I feel it's illegal, but you're saying it's not.
No, and, and, and in fairness, Wanda, you're, I think it needs to be addressed as well. I would just recommend a different course of action. I think it needs to be addressed through the terms of lease, for the reason that I mentioned. If we as, if we as a school department, we're a landlord now, we have a lease, we have a tenant basically, who is paying rent. I think there's a reasonable expectation on behalf of the LCOC that the space is usable. And the heating system, the controls are on our side, we know this. We haven't been able to isolate it the way that we have been able to meter essentially separate water, electricity, or whatever. So my personal thought on the matter is that the easiest way to get at what you're talking about would be to go through the terms of lease. And I, I think that's the best way, in my opinion. Looking at a couple of other figures on this page. At the end of the day, down at the very bottom, everybody look at the third column, where it says beginning fund balance, ending fund balance. If, if you add the numbers together, you can see that the general fund grew by $122,000. And most of that is money that we carried through through special education. But your general fund grew from 375,161 to 497,702. So you are in a very strong position financially. And I always get questions about what are some possible uses of that money? And this is how we've used the predominant amount of that money in the past. In your budget, where it says carryover, we are using this money as carryover, and that functions to bring down taxation in the community, because you don't have to raise this budget. So that's how we have used it in the past. However, as the amount of money has increased, you're in a strong enough position to do other things with it now. Conceivably, you, and you're your own fiscal agent, I have to do this differently in the other towns, but this board could vote to set up a reserve account for something. Buy another bus, replace the roof. You could designate an amount of money that essentially sets up a reserve account for other projects. And I would encourage this board to do that. And we would do that in the summertime when we're, when we're voting, and it would be, and it would be more transparent that way. But as the number grows in the general fund, you're in a stronger position to do some other things. What those things may be is something that the board can decide. I just throw that out there as a suggestion, and to let those folks here know, this is how we cushion taxation, by injecting some of this money as carryover. The town has to raise less through tax assessment, and that helps overall taxation. It's also conceivable that we can help the town budget. And I've seen this in other places. If the town side has an increase, for whatever reason, and we inject more money on our side and make our budget go down, the taxpayer doesn't take a hit. So if the town budget goes up, and our budget goes down, when you put them together, and people get their tax bills in the mail, it, it's not a hit. So we're in a position with this much money in your general fund to do some things. I can't speak for the town, obviously, but if there's a need, we're in a position to help. We can make taxes go down through the increased use of carryover. So people look at that number and say, well, if you have that much money, the question that I have heard in the past and other places, well, are you taxing us too much? And I would remind those here that we used a healthy amount of carryover. I think it was 175, it was, it was a healthy amount of carryover. And tag, we made our end go down. And I can't, I don't, I didn't hear there was a huge increase on the town side, so people should have seen a little tax relief this year, maybe not a heck of a lot, but you should have seen a little. And that's how that is accomplished. So at this point, I, I don't have anything further to say, at least at this time, for your audit. I'm happy to entertain questions, but the last thought I want to leave you with, and I'll open the stuff up, you're in a very strong position financially. We can inject more carryover to lower our side of the school budget. You can vote to set up a reserve account to do other projects. So you're in a position to make some choices and potentially do some things. So with that, I'll, I'll be quiet.
Mr. Johnson?
Certainly.
Do you have a question?
You may.
With, with Mr. Johnson...
Go ahead, go ahead.
Just being, well, it's, now, you just said it a little bit ago, with the other schools. I mean, is their money all coming like one big pot, and you use money?
They're, they're set up...
From the other eight schools?
So the other, the other towns, I've referenced the other town. Each one has its own audit, and some, and four or five of them use the same auditor, so the form is set up the same way, makes it great for my staff, because we all get used to the same format, and we can read it quickly. And I'll use Pembroke as an example. And I said this at Pembroke Board meeting. They can't go another year without reshingling roof. My first year on, they reshingled the space over the gym. So if you pull into the driveway at Pembroke, you got a set of shingles that are kind of gray, and some that are black, and the idea was to go over lighter color and bleed off some heat. But they've had some shingles literally blow off the roof lately with these high winds that we've been had. So what I'm going to do there is put the project up to bid, and there'll be, then we'll get bids and so on. But we will increase the use of their carryover, try and cushion taxation, because they have a big, large-scale project that they need to do.
With the money though, I'm asking you like the other schools over there, and where the only fad.
Yep.
So our money's separate from everybody else's money?
All certain.
Like, do people borrow, do you borrow from other towns and all that?
No, not, not between towns. But i- i- if you had other towns in your SAD, it, it gets more tricky. You don't, because you're a one-town SAD. You've always, you know, go back 20 years, you've always been MSAD 19, but it's always been just a little bit. Other SADs that have five or six towns, they do have one, they do have one audit, and they have a cost-sharing formula. And it's not quite as clear how much of the carryover is distributed among those uptowns. But don't get me wrong, in our configuration in the AOS, every town is unique and separate. The money doesn't cross between towns, the audits don't cross between towns. So it is very much separate in this configuration.
So Mr. Johnson had spoken to me about just jotting down some things that I know of at the school that might need some repairs. Sheldon isn't in, so I haven't had the, a chance to have a heart-to-heart. Of course, at the top is heating system.
What's the sports building?
That's the building, I've walked my way down through it yet. There are three classrooms that have windows and are leaking severely, that come down through and create quite a puddle. There's some hot tub issues, like where our kids get off the bus, there are potholes. They are school property, they're not the town road, down by the pre-k room. The doors by the pre-k room, and where you come into the cafeteria, are getting pretty nasty. The gym floor, Mr. Ashby mentioned this to me, and I took a walk down on it tonight. Down in that area where it went...
Same area that was buckled two years ago?
It's nowhere near there, but it, it's, something started. And again, just a wish list, I don't know if that's something to get at sooner than later. That's not my area of expertise. As usual, we could always use the playground equipment. The IA door, the garage door, is getting pretty shaky. And then there's that sports building that sits on a cement foundation.
Back up, the IA door is what?
Yes, down to the industrial, our, Sheldon...
That's the rolling door that goes up like the garage, right there?
Yeah, the one, up, up, maybe down, up, up, maybe down. Trying to get it to go up and down. Sheldon could tell you more about that. That's the one that, he brings the tractor and stuff in and out, and the mowers and those types of things. This is just a lesson, I just wanted to inform the board.
You know, this fault, did the town ever help, if I remember that day, with the tap, they were down there to pave for people?
They did do the road.
Yeah.
And Ricky did come down, but there are some areas that I consider the road that I don't know until they do.
And I think, gosh, Sheldon had worked on it, but the cafeteria...
Yes, the cement.
That cement.
That cement and that door.
I see where he patched it, but it's still...
Several years, that's been patched.
Yeah.
Each year.
That was sad.
Mhm, I forgot to write that down. And then walk right. And that's all, I just wanted, Mr. Johnson, after you pulled together the list, I just wanted to provide you a copy.
And do you think, Mr. Johnson, I probably might just, I mean, he's asked, but do they have grants for heating systems? I mean, could we ever get grant money, money for windows, grants?
The state has put money into the revolving renovation fund. So that is, that is an opportunity to access potential state money. There's an application procedure, and it is competitive. So towns with, you know, if there's a town somewhere with an older facility, you know, they're going to get rated higher, but you get the idea when I say it's a competitive process. That is one source. If we were, if we were in a position to, to start making out applications, and there are several things that would have to happen before then, we would certainly look for energy efficiency grants. I don't think you'd see, I don't think you'd see a grant for the full-blown cost of completely dropping it in, but you could see supplemental grants for energy-efficient lighting. Things, things, things like that, and I, I can't, I can't think off the top of my head of some other scenarios. We would certainly take advantage of any source of funding apart from local funding. So, you know, that idea, Wanda, that concept of a heating system, that too is something that we could designate money toward. You know, and it doesn't have to be the whole thing. You can say, we're going to designate 50 this year, maybe we'll designate 50 in another year, or whatever. If you take a variety of forms, but that's the type of large-scale project that you could set up a reserve account for, using this money in your general fund.
Okay, we do have an adjustment to the agenda, correct?
We do. I'd like to delete just number one, because Brittany Ray can't be with us this evening. And we hope to reschedule her at a mutually convenient time. But we can proceed right to, right to number two.
Okay, we have the old business. Handle that. And new business to consider or re-question the town. And the re-question the town is actually something that's going to impact the number we have on our audit here. Just loosely speaking, we had an extra $120,000 from it, that we didn't expect for special education. The town, and I'm sure a lot of people here have heard, lost a dump truck, lost a plow truck this year to buy a, and last year they, last month, last week, rather, they approved to buy a new one. So what I'd like to do is see if the board can get this money back to the town. And I, was it 122, 123,000? And I think you can explain the process to that, right?
Yep. So I spoke with Renee, and if there was somebody that attended the special town meeting last week, please correct, please correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding of that was that those present voted to go ahead and enter into kind of a purchase agreement, where the town took out a note, borrowed money essentially, to facilitate the purchase of this truck. And they already have it, because obviously, it's, it's cold, it's winter, they need the plows.
Truck is here.
It's here. In speaking with Renee, she told me that she was able to, through the lender, defer the first payment until September or October, basically in the fall, which means that the town will have tax revenue at that time, and can make the payment. If I had any local lobstermen among us, they understand about balloon payments when they're catching them, it's essentially the same thing. On our, for our purposes, when I alluded to helping the town in injecting more money on our side, I don't know the figures, and, and that's the town business, I don't necessarily need to know. But theoretically, if they purchased a dump truck for $90,000, financed it for four or five years, you're looking at a $20,000 payment. John, do you know the specific...
$59,600 for the truck.
Got a deal.
And about $4,400 of interest charges, assuming a four, a five-year note.
Okay. So whatever that annual payment works out to be, so for easy math, if they're going to pay a $15,000 annual payment, including interest, we could increase our carryover by the same $15,000, just for easy math, and there's no impact of that purchase to the taxpayer. Because when the town budget and the school budget come together, you get one tax bill in the mail. And that's the type of helping each other that, that I'm talking about. Now, obviously, we're going to use more than $15,000 in carryover. We used well over 100 last year. But we would, my point is, we would increase our end to help offset the increase in expenditure on the town side. And the result would be, the taxpayer is not going to feel a hit in the pocketbook over buying the dump truck. I mean, are there any questions about how that can work? We're not talking about literally cutting a check to the town, because that can't happen in this case. But we would certainly increase our side as a good partner, and, and being sensitive to the level of taxation where we can do that.
Can just somehow be negotiated to encourage the town to plow the road in front of the school?
I mentioned that, and he said this...
They do, but just, but just the road.
I sense there's some history there, that, that, that goes back a ways. I'm, I'm probably not even know on that, John.
Actually, the parking lot, I'd like to have a plow, they have to plow the road.
Okay. But, you know, at this point, that's something that we can consider when we are putting together the budget. It's good that the town has those figures, because that's kind of, I will, I will need to know the specifics when we're, when we're generating our budget, but that type of thing is very common, and it's a good example of the school department and the town working together, and that makes everybody happy.
And maybe because we're doing this, maybe they will plow the park.
There you go.
Yeah. It's a big truck, so. Okay, so I don't see really any reason to vote on this unless we're going to put a monetary figure on that.
No, I mean, we, we don't need to vote on, on the action right now. You can essentially, you can essentially table action until budget time. And then we'll gather up the figures, and we'll get the exact number from the town, and we, we can roll with it at that time. So if it pleases the board, they're motion to table until, just at this time.
Make a motion to table this to, for the notice. Until we can anticipate repairing the number, we're going to pass on to the town on taxes. Okay, all in favor?
Okay.
Okay. Melissa's second.
Mike, that was a motion.
So Mike, Melissa?
Melissa's second.
And the vote?
Okay, the next to consider the adoption of the athletic handbook. I'd make a motion to actually table this item right now for several reasons. One, because we have a new athletic director in, in place. And I'd also like to have the board be able to look this over right now. We are down one board member, hopefully, we will have another board member, hopefully by the next meeting. So I'd like to actually probably put this off until the first meeting in January, pretty changes all by.
Can I just ask, Mike, I was involved with the last time we did the athletic handbook, and that was two, I think, two years ago. If a couple of board members can be involved with this again. And I'd also like to ask, if we put...
Okay, we have, we have a motion on the floor right now for that.
Okay.
If you'd like to make a motion that we have a board subcommittee review it, we can do that, but the motion is considered table in this right now until the first meeting in January. Any further discussion on that? Okay, go ahead.
Can I just be reminded the process when a board member resigns? Is that an appointment by the select board?
Let's, let's act on the motion we have on the floor right now, please.
Yeah, I just, can I talk about it real quick?
Further discussion, yes.
Um, I'd, I'd like for us, you know, to be actively involved with the whole process of reviewing this again. And when we get this in place, Mike, I'd also like to abide by it. Like you said, we spent a lot of time on it last year, the last time.
What I'd like to do is actually get this motion satisfied right now. And actually, I will actually have a subcommittee or a committee put on the next agenda that we can vote on, okay? So, all in favor of the motion on the floor right now? Thank you.
And you said table to January?
Table to the first meeting in January. And if we can make a note for the next agenda.
Subcommittee for the handbook?
Yeah, we're talking about people to review the handbook on the board.
Got it.
Okay, and, uh, I was, can I ask, Mr. Johnson, one quick thing?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you about the subcommittee, Mr. Johnson. I've been doing some things with it, but I haven't shared anything yet with IRE. But when do they usually start that budget?
Okay, subsidy figures are released by the state in February. My office starts putting in known, known commodities. When I say known commodities, like teacher salaries that are dictated by contract. We start putting in planning numbers for stuff like heating, fuel, and whatever, usually toward the end of January. But things really pick up once state subsidy figures are released. And your bud, your budget is one of the early ones, because I'm very thankful for this. Traditionally, you vote for the end of the fiscal year. I've got, I've got some towns that drag it out, and that becomes problematic in some cases. So your, your budget is one of the earlier ones in the process. So end of January, early February is when we really get going.
I'm just wondering then, if it starts in February, every part of our meetings, can we just do a little, I know that we get into really reviewing it, but things that the subcommittee's finding-
Yep.
Uh, to just review that for a little bit of that.
Right, so on, on your agenda where it says school committee, that would be the place where any subcommittee would report out. And so that, that's, that's one of the things that's there for, that's actually in the primary purpose for that.
Probably in the next meetings coming up, I'll be asking for that information, so. Okay, so, and thank you all for coming.
Gosh, my bad.
Excuse me?
May I ask a couple of questions?
Uh, yes, go right ahead.
My first question is, you called executive session tonight. Under what main statute is that called?
For personnel.
What is the number?
Right now, I don't have it. So just for personnel issue.
Okay, my other question, I understand that someone here made a comment that they're going to have younger coaches. I'd like to think whoever reviews that realizes that's age discrimination, and that is opening this border up to a lawsuit. I'm just making a statement.
Miss Matthews made note of that. And I applauded that.
I just want to say, age is no bearing on the quality of your.
Okay, we are, we are adjourned. I thought we'd just leave.
Excuse me, but I have a couple more questions, if I could.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. The reading of math programs that we've spent $28,000 on in the last two years, are other schools in the AOS using these programs? Yes. All of them?
I don't know about all of them. When I was in Eastport, they were, I left before.
Kenny Johnson can't answer that question, does he, out of the AOS? They were, we were all using the same math program when I left.
Perry, right now, is exploring, and I say exploring, a new math program. Their principal, their, their principal in their third year came to Perry from New York. So she, she caught you in the middle of the dip and I. But the curriculum that you have is being used in some of the other towns, but not all, in the short end.
I guess my, my question for that is, you know, under the AOS clauses, we are all supposed to have the same curriculum going on. And if we're using it, and somebody may have come in back to Perry or Perry or Kenny's, they're using some now, but we're not saying this is-